Okay, good evening, everyone. Looks like we summer kind of a little bit a month early, so that's great. It's hit about twenty-seven or twenty-eight today. We'll take that for the rest of the summer, hopefully. Anyway, I'll now call the regular meeting of the Rural Community of Hanwell to order, please. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, so that's motion by councillor Heisler and seconded by councillor McKenzie. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes, please, from April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four?
You have to vote.
Oh, can we question? In big, yep. Good idea.
I do the same thing.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary, mind it. Motion carried, thank you.
And don't forget, you've got councillor Crowe's on here. You gotta wait for a second for him to vote?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, he's in the...
On Zoom. If he's on Zoom.
Yep. Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the minutes of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, a regular meeting of council.
I move the adoption of the minutes of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's motion by deputy mayor Jonah and seconded by councillor Fox. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, mind it. Thank you. So, public input, do we have any public input tonight?
No.
So, there's no public input tonight. Disclosures, council, any disclosures?
Yep.
No disclosures?
Nope, there is.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, I have a disclosure. Do you have to read this whole?
No.
Just pertaining to...
Which item?
Which item, please stand by. I just looked at it. In correspondence, twelve A.
Okay.
Yep.
And please.
And...
Same as, same for myself.
And me as well.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
So, head councillor declified and councillor...
Crowe.
Crowe.
And Hope. And Hope.
And Hope. We have lots of, all have disclosures tonight, conflicts of interest, I'm assuming. So, I'll ask chief crowd, he's here today, to give us the fire department report, please.
Evening, mayor, council, in public. April, we're on twenty calls. Variety, accident, grass fires are starting. Few alarm calls. Any questions?
Yes, councillor Fox.
Yes, thank you. I'm just curious as to the cause of all of these grass fires. What normally causes those?
What normally causes those?
Yeah, or...
People wearing vests.
Well, we can rule out lightning.
Oh.
We had two that was caused by downed power lines. And the rest of... How would I put that? Suspicious.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Heisler.
I'm just curious about the animal rescue.
Animal rescue. Dog on the ice went through.
Oh, okay. Didn't know you wrote that.
Yeah, they called about ten minutes after they last seen the dog. We went out, then we put people on knives. They were tethered off and proper equipment. But, no, we never retrieved the dog.
Oh.
That's too bad, yeah.
Sadly.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the fire report for April twenty twenty-four as presented?
Motion received, fire department report. I'll second that.
Okay, motion by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor Hope. Any questions, comments, concerns? All questions have been answered. Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, council, thank you, chief. Appreciate it as usual.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
They move on to training now.
Okay, we have some interesting presentations tonight. First up on the agenda is item A, Stingray Media Solutions.
Thank you, everyone. My name's Dylan Buell. I live in Hanwell at sixteen Timberland Court, just a couple streets down. I could have walked here, but it's too hot for that. So, I have an air conditioning. I'll admit, this is the first opportunity I've had to speak in this format to a council. I've given lots of presentations over the years, but never here, so again, appreciate your time. Reason for me being here is a couple of weeks ago, I dropped by this location and spoke with Megan, your administration person, who was very friendly, and we had a great conversation about Hanwell, about this building, about what is happening in the community this summer with Hanwell Days and upcoming concert, and all of the events that you host throughout the year. And we got talking about, you know, ways in which that can be marketed to a greater area or specifically targeted to people in Hanwell and may increase some of the attendance for your events if you're experiencing low numbers or if you're trying to build up attendance throughout the year. So, I'm with Stingray Media. Stingray Media is locally, we're New Country ninety-two-three and Hot ninety-three-one on the radio stations. Beyond that, we offer an entire suite of digital marketing solutions from YouTube videos that we all see when we're watching YouTube as we cut our cable and no longer turn on the TV. A lot of us have turned to YouTube, myself included. But when we do want to watch TV and we use the app such as CBC Gem or CTV app, we're, we see those ads before we're able to watch our program. We can offer those ads to our customers now. Streaming audio, so every time you listen to a podcast, you say, hey, Alexa, play New Country ninety-two-three. There's a custom ad that runs before you're actually tuned into the radio station. Even things like Google Search, which is massive. So, when someone searches, let's say wedding reception venues in Fredericton, is Hanwell coming up as an option for them, right? Are they needing to search Hanwell specifically, right? So, Google Search campaigns can allow you to input keywords that would generate responses even if you're not searching for Hanwell specifically, which could increase the revenue for your beautiful space here and fill your weekends, not this year only, but next year and years to come. And then, of course, social media, right? Social media is huge this day. We do everything from, you know, your traditional social media, which is kind of crazy to say, but things like Facebook and Instagram and even TikTok videos. So, my ask here today, I think, would be to have the opportunity to learn more about the events and the things and areas where we could potentially help, and then have a chance to present some solutions tailored to those needs.
Well, thank you, Dylan, for your presentation, appreciate it. So, we'll certainly take that, have a look at it anyway and see what we'll do, we'll certainly go back.
Sure thing. I can provide some follow-up information with Megan, and I can leave my business card here today if you folks would like to take that into consideration. We'd love to be an asset for you.
Okay, great, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, like I said, in the past, we, for the last, we have had, for Hanwell Days, we, I think, I think it was still the same company back in the day, we've changed names, but we have actually had, you know, your radio people come out to our events and then that sort of thing.
Perfect, yeah, we have the summer cruiser program where they're, they're going around to different events in the city. Typically, you know, summer students who are really good on social media, they'll take some photos. Whether you're one of our customers or not, that's something that we would actually have available to you this year as well. We can have the summer cruiser for your Hanwell Days. But what really helps to generate the attendance, of course, is maybe a little blast on the radio a week or two leading up to it, highlighting some of the events, and it can be very effective.
I think soon, we probably would like to at least talk.
Sure, sure.
That sort of thing. It'll have to be fairly soon because it's coming up in our minds.
Yeah, we need to get to work on it, get the creative going, figure out what you'd want to say on an ad. Some of the other solutions I mentioned may be a bigger picture that take a little bit more time, but radio is certainly something that's still an effective medium and can, especially on the transactional, the short term, when done right with the right message, can really kind of generate some buzz and awareness.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions for Dylan, will he answer?
No.
I think that'll be great now.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to presentation number two, we have a couple here from Big Brothers Big Sisters. So, I'll certainly welcome you guys to the mic.
Thank you very much. It's really a pleasure for us to be here tonight. My name's Anita Legere. I'm the president and the board of directors of Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I have been a big sister for something like thirty-five years. So, I know I don't look old, but I'll tell you a little bit about our story later. And I'm with John Foley, who's our executive director, and he's going to start our presentation, and then I'm going to end it. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us. I'm John, as you mentioned. I've been with the agency in this position for just about a year, actually, in June will be a year. But more important, I'm a big brother. So, I've been, I have a little brother who's going to be eleven in June, and I started when he was seven. So, I'm happy to say that we've both grown and having a really good time. So, it's, I get to do it firsthand. It's really a lot of fun. What we're doing, what we're here this evening just to talk about is what we're doing, actually, is going around the community, different groups and councils, and just talking about who we are, what we do, how we do it, and just so that everybody understands that we're here and that we can help the children in the community. And that's the main reason we're doing it. So, we can, we can go. So, basically, we ignite the power and potential of young people. I'm not going to read these slides, so trust me, but basically, you know, how do we do this? Well, what we do, basically, we're a match organization, okay? So, we match vulnerable children with caring adult mentors. That's it. That's what we're all about. Now, it's not that simple because our caseworkers do a lot of work to make sure that the right matches are in place and that all, everything followed. But, but we're a mentoring organization. That's what we do. Okay, so just, just to give you some context about the organization, our agency is one of ninety-one across the country, so we're part of a national organization. There's five in New Brunswick, and there's fourteen, I believe, in Atlantic Canada, okay? So, local agency overviewed. So, Big Brothers Big Sister Fredericton Oremato was founded in nineteen sixty-seven by the Kiwanis Club in Fredericton. We're a registered charity. We do not charge any service fees for our families. So, that's a big thing when it comes to families approaching us who may not have much disposable funds. Our services are delivered through the Fredericton, Oremato, and surrounding area. We're affiliated with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Canada, which is in Toronto, our national office, which I mentioned. The majority of our funding is generated through satellite-specific fundraising campaigns, proposals, grant writing. Most of our, I'll be honest, most of our fundraising efforts to this point has been through events, and we, like a lot of nonprofits, are trying to branch out and do more grants, do more corporate presentations and things like that, because that's where it's at, right? And our annual budget is, this past year was two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. So, you can see what kind of money we're dealing with in our budgets, not that large. Okay, so every year, over a hundred young people are serviced, served through our agency program in Fredericton Oremato. So, that doesn't mean there's a hundred new matches made every year. It just means that there's a hundred children on average in our system. So, they might be already in there because the children come in, the age group is between five and sixteen, so they can come in really early, and usually they'll graduate of the program at sixteen. Sometimes they'll stay a little longer if we feel that they need the extra help. But, so on average, though, we do about fifty matches a year, new matches, okay, in the area. Yeah, and what we're finding is that over the last year, that we're getting a lot more referrals from social development, Department of Health, a lot of the schools, like there were nine middle schools and elementary schools approached us this year. And the big issue with us is mentors, okay? Because the children are there, but we need mentors, and this is one of the main reasons. Other than looking always for resources to be able to run our programs, we're out talking to people to let them know that we need mentors for these children, and I'll talk about the programs in a second. There they are, the mentoring programs. So, the community-based programs, there's in-school programs, and group programs, which is Go Girls and Game On. So, the first one is the community-based program, and that's basically involves a one-on-one match between the big and the little, okay? Bigs are committed to spend two to four hours weekly with their littles for a minimum of one year. A community match is what my little and myself are in. So, you know, we can do anything. It's, it's not a school match, so it's anything in the community, as it is. So, you take the child out in the community and you do things, whether like we'll go to play sports, we'll go to sporting events, go swimming, go to movies, anything. So, it's out in the community, that's how that works, okay? So, and matches are based on interest, background, and personality. So, our caseworkers do a really good job in meeting with the mentors first and the children and their family to see what interests they have, and then matching them appropriately so that they have like interests, so that when they, when they do get together, that they, it's easy for them to have a lot of fun. Okay? Big Couples Mentoring is also a community-based program, and what that is, is basically like the picture shows, instead of one-on-one, it's a couple with one, one little, okay? So, they would take turns with that little, or they would do, the three together would go out in the community and do events. It's a newer program for us, and we only have two actual matches on this right now with the big couple, but there are more people interested in it, certainly, okay? In-school mentoring is, as it is, as it says, it's in school. So, it's the volunteer mentors matched with a young person based again on skills and background. It's a one-hour commitment a week, okay, and it happens in the school. So, you might go in, and I think Anita will speak to this after, but you might go in and do, you know, something in the gym for the hour, or you might go into, if there's a kitchen, you go into the kitchen and bake something, whatever. But the teachers have agreed, they approach us, they agree to take the child out of the school for that one hour, and they meet with you in school, and you do something there. So, it's, it runs obviously September to June during the school year. And what we find is that a lot of mentors who are just starting out in this program or these programs would like the in-school mentoring because it's only a one-hour commitment. They do not have to worry about taking the child out in the community. They can meet in the school. And then, what we're finding is that a lot of, a lot of mentors who are doing this are coming now and asking, can we look at a community match if you have a larger commitment to the program? Go Girls, okay, so Go Girls and Game On, which is the next one, are group programs. So, what these happen in school as well. There's five or seven girls in this case, between the ages of twelve and fourteen. So, we have two mentors for each of these groups, and we go into the school, and it's basically, they meet one and a half to two hours a week, that's each session, for a seven to ten-week period, okay? So, that's the commitment for here. And this is most, is basically all of a mental health, regular physical activity, and self-esteem. So, it's all positive things that these students are looking for. The parents or that their teachers or guidance counselors might have identified that this particular child would benefit from something like that. So, they ask them to be into, into one of our groups. So, we will be running a lot of these in the fall. We have a student that just came on this week, and she's already preparing to be running some of these or getting them set up to run. Again, our leading factors mentors. And we find for these programs that the best mentors are university students because they're a little older or high school students, but not as much. But high school students are older and they're, they can relate more to the, to the kids, right? So, we've done a lot of open houses with universities, and we've had some children, some mentors come forward, but we're hoping to have more success in the new year. And the Game On is the same, it's for boys, ages twelve to fourteen, and it's five to seven boys. And again, it's dealing with healthy eating, physical activity, and self-esteem. And the commitment wise is still one and a half to two-hour sessions once a week and runs for seven to ten weeks. So, these are just some stats, and I don't want to take too long, but adversities of BBS needs. So, Big Brothers Big Sisters Canada has run a, run a survey with all the kids across the country that are into programs and looked at children who had adverse childhood experiences, okay? So, and what they found is when they calculated all the numbers, that seventy-four percent of the children have at least four adverse childhood experiences when they come in for their first intake, first intake meeting with our caseworkers. So, you know, those are just a few examples of so many adverse childhood experiences. So, seventy-nine percent exposed to mental health, sixty-six exposed to financial stresses. It just shows that the children are there, that they certainly can need our help. What we deal with mostly is almost the majority of the families we're dealing with are single-parent families. So, that says a lot, too. I mean, it's a little harder, the parent that is there is looking for a role model. The mentors aren't there to take the mother or the father's spot. They're going to be a role model for that child and to fill that space. The power of three just basically is the three components that make this all work, okay? The family and the youth, the organization, which would be ourselves, and the mentors, the volunteer mentors. When these all come together, all this shows is that the outcomes can be very positive, and you will see an increase in social emotional competence, health, and mental health and well-being, and educational engagement, employment readiness. And we have data that shows that this is the case. So, it takes all three to work, though. It can't, you know, you have to have the counselors, you have to have the kids, and you have to have the mentors. The power of three provides twenty-three to one social return on investment. So, every one dollar invested in mentoring returns twenty-three dollars to society, okay? So, mentoring youth in our program see positive results. And the Boston Consulting Company actually did a survey recently on the kids that had graduated from our program, and they seen really, you can see the numbers, the increase in how they did better in the community, how they did better in life and at work as well. So, it just shows that the mentoring programs, not just ours, others as well, are really positive for the children. Who are the families? Big Brothers Big Sisters will work with any families that actually need our help, okay? The kids, again, as I mentioned, is between five and sixteen. Youth can be matched up to eighteen. So, again, if a child is sixteen, we feel that they would benefit from two more years in the program, we'll do that and run it. Currently, we have fifty plus young people waiting on our waitlist, and one is too many. So, that's why I'm saying that mentors are the key here, that we need to bring people to come forward, understand it's not an enormous commitment, and I can, I can definitely say, and I think Anita would say the same thing, is that it's, it's not just benefits one way for the child, it's definitely benefits for the mentors as well. BBS is inclusive, so yeah, we will take, anybody who wants to be a mentor, they can be a mentor, okay? They obviously have to go through the police checks and the social development checks and have references and everything like that, but age, sexual orientation, gender, religion, faith, race, nothing, nobody is left off here. If you want to be and you have the qualifications and you have the desire and you pass all your tests, you can be a mentor. And that's it for me, we'll take questions, but this is our bowl for kids' sake, the slide, the last one, and that's our signature fundraiser for the year. And you might say, actually, we have a partnership with Stingray, and they're doing a lot of stuff. We didn't need to do this, huh? But they are our media partner, and they've been running a lot of stuff for us. And we have our event coming up next weekend, and we're very excited. We have, our goal was fifty teams, we have thirty-four. Our goal was fifty thousand dollars, fifty is the magic number, and we've raised close to thirty-four thousand dollars already with sponsors and online teams. So, you can apply online to if you want to put a team in, or if you wanted to sponsor, or if you don't have a team and you want to just join someone else's team, you can go to our website, you can do that. You can donate to a team, or you can just donate outright to the event. It's a lot of fun, and you can just go to our website again if you're interested in putting a team in or anything like that, and we would certainly appreciate it. And here.
All right, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
I'm the history of the organization, I guess. I didn't start in nineteen sixty-seven, but my little sister was nine years old when we first met, and she was being raised by her dad who had no idea what to do with a little girl. He had, she had a brother as well, no problem. They spent all kinds of time at football games and practices and tinkering with car engines. He had no idea what to do with a little girl. She spent most of her early childhood in her room crying because basically she was ignored. So, when I got involved at nine, she was no longer ignored. I did everything I could to make her feel special because she was special. Went to all of her school performances and plays and things. I was, I was the key person, I think, really in her life. I remember she had long red hair and she was a great big freckle, and she'd come out dressed and wored with this bright red lipstick. Well, ladies, you know, bright red lipstick, red hair, no. So, anyway, something as simple as what color lipstick she should be wearing. Another thing, she had never had a vegetable other than a french fry when I met her. So, we used to go, Big Brothers Big Sisters has a special card for all the adults, for the adult mentors, that you get discounts at different places. So, if a big bought their meal, for instance, at Wendy's, the little eats for free. So, at the day, those days, they used to have the great big salad bar. Well, she didn't know what any of this stuff was, so I had to explain, well, this is broccoli, this is cauliflower, you know? And then she'd get herself a great big plate full of salad, and I think she had more Thousand Islands dressing on it than she did salad. But she became, she ended up becoming almost partly vegetarian because she loved vegetables so much. But she had a hard time in high school, almost failed high school, got in with the wrong crowd, got pregnant, named the baby after me. Went to, went to MBCC, it really didn't, wasn't her thing. I expected her to go to university because I knew what a smart girl she was. So, she finally ended up going to St. Thomas. While she's at St. Thomas, she's raising her daughter on her own. She's working in the registrar's office. Remember, this child almost failed high school. She graduates with first-class honors with distinction in economics. I wasn't too proud or anything. Then she accepted a job in Northern British Columbia, the University of Northern British Columbia. While she was out there working, she got her master's of business and was on the board of directors for Big Brothers Big Sisters. Then she came back to New Brunswick, was in management at the St. John's Regional Hospital, opened her own business as a yogi, she did yoga and all that sort of thing. And plus, she has an international business where she deals with employers online and helps them with their business plans and all this sort of thing. She is now at, she's teaching CJAP in Hol Quebec, and she's getting ready to do her PhD. She's got two universities fighting over, Carleton and Waterloo. So, she's not sure exactly which way she's going to go, but she's going to be getting her PhD. In the meantime, her daughter graduated with a degree in chemistry from University of Prince Edward Island, is finishing up her master's degree, and just bought, she and her fiance just bought their first house. So, I'm not too proud of these two girls already. But that's just one story. There are so, so many stories. I don't know where I would be if it hadn't been for her because I had moved here from Mupton. I spent a lot of time with my nieces and nephews in Mupton. I never had any children. I always thought I'd be married with four, it didn't happen. So, I spent a lot of time with my nieces and nephews. When I moved here, I didn't have that contact. So, that's when I signed up to be a big sister. And she's now forty-six years old. She was nine when we met, so you can do the math, and we're still very, very close. She calls me, she wanted to talk about this PhD thing, and she didn't know which direction she should go, and so we must have talked for two hours on Zoom about which direction she should go. She was thinking, oh, maybe I shouldn't do it now, do it. So, anyway, that's just one example. We were talking about the in-school mentoring program. I've got a very quick story for you in in-school mentoring. One of the children was fluffy, like me, and she was being teased in her classroom for her weight. And the big sister ended up going in and becoming part of her life. And they did things in the library, and she taught her how to cross-stitch, and she made a cross-stitch for her mother for Christmas, but they went into the kitchen and made chocolate chip cookies. Then, they took the chocolate chip cookies back to this little girl's room. Well, you don't tease somebody and bully somebody who's delivering chocolate chip cookies to you, right? That child's whole school experience changed just because of one hour a week with a caring adult who took time to sort of get through all that mess that can be bullying. So, that's just one example. We have fabulous caseworkers, mentoring coordinators, we call them, who do a great job, as John was saying. It's all based on the interest, and we wouldn't match a child, for instance, that's really into sports with somebody that's more into computers or likes the outdoors. So, it's all based on your own personal interest and the child's personal interest. And the other thing that's unique about our program is after the match is actually done, that's not the end, we monitor that whole match for the rest of the match. There are specific times that you have to meet, and there are things, first specific things that have to be done so that we continue to monitor the match throughout the whole history of the match. My little sister, when she turned sixteen, knew she was supposed to be off the program. She tore up the litter. She decided she was, she was sticking on for the long haul, and we have after all those years. So, thank you so, so much for your interest. We really appreciate you listening. We're just trying to get the word out that we're here for everybody. It says Fredericton Oremato, but that includes New Maryland, includes Hanwell, and includes anybody that needs us. There are close to, there are over five thousand single-parent families in this geographic area. And as John said, a lot of our children come from single-parent families. If you can imagine five thousand, that could potentially be a lot of kids because not, you're normally just one child. And if you're a single mom and you're trying to work, and you're trying to maybe upgrade your education, and you're looking after your family, it can be a real burden. So, we come in and we do things that help make the child feel special and help them reach their full potential. That's what we're working towards. So, thank you very, very much for your... So thank you very, very much for your interest, we have a handout for you. And any questions that you may have, we're welcome to answer.
Yeah, okay, so the handout is basically just about the need for mentors, and the programs are on the back. And Annette, one of our caseworkers, her card is with, and I'll leave you some of my cards to case in. Okay, thank you.
And the email's on there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your interest.
Really impressive presentation, though.
Thank you.
Be more than welcome to stay if you want, but.
You don't have to.
Counselor Fox has a question.
Question, so, first off, I want to thank you both very much for coming. The program is incredible. I served as the executive director of the Frederick Tink Community Foundation at one point. I know your organization fairly well, really appreciate the work that you do, so I wanted to say that first off. Secondly, I know that there's, there's quite a cost to doing the matches.
Yes.
But that isn't an easy process, and it really is there. So I would just encourage you to continue to break away from just the events and look at other things and put requests in when you have requests for funding.
Definitely.
We are doing that, yes.
You're doing that right now.
And that's a very good point, it's about twelve hundred dollars for each match.
And that was years ago.
And that was years ago, so it's probably up quite a bit. But as I mentioned, we don't just match and then drop the children and the adults. We follow it right straight through, so that's significant and that costs money. So, but that's one of the reasons we're successful, too, is because we, we have a caring group of caseworkers who follow the matches right straight through.
Exactly, I'm, right now, I'm working with the John Howard study.
Yes, yeah.
And, you know, I look at, I look at some of the folks that we deal with, some of the youth that we deal with, and I think, like, if they had been in your program and gone through your program, very likely, they wouldn't be in our program.
That's, that's one of my pet peeves, why the government spends so much money on prisons instead of on Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, John Howard, you know, all these children's programs. They would, we would keep them out of prison, right, and it's much cheaper. However, that's my pet peeve.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great summer, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we had another presenter, but.
Thanks, take care.
We had another presenter, but since he's not here, he can reschedule for another date. So we'll move on to permit applications, we had nine permit applications. I see three of them are for the installation of solar arrays, which is kind of interesting.
Is that a story? We're looking at the right.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully it was going right. So we had three of those on the billing permit that were all involving the solar panels, which is kind of interesting, that people are starting to get more involved in that. So tonight, we have no proclamations and no petitions or delegations. So we'll move on to item ten, which is business arising, item A, we send motion thirteen dash two, dash twenty twenty-four.
So when we wait to pay this invoice, we always check the motions and stuff, and we realize that it was off a hundred, we were off by a hundred dollars or whatever, I'm not sure how, how we did that. But anyway, so we, just for our auditor as well, I mean, a hundred dollars is nothing, but we want to make sure that our motions match our.
Keep our books safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, so I'll get a motion to rescind, please.
Sure. So whereas at the February twenty-first regular meeting of council, motion thirteen dash zero two, dash twenty twenty-four was unanimously approved by council to accept the quote from Greenfoot Energy Solutions in the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred dollars plus HST for four twenty-four thousand BTU Deacon heat pumps for Station One. And whereas the quote was actually twenty-six thousand three hundred dollars plus HST, I move to rescind motion thirteen dash zero two, dash twenty twenty-four and accept the quote from Greenfoot Energy Solutions in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred dollars plus HST for four twenty-four thousand BTU Deacon heat pumps for Station One.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Counselor Fox, seconded by Counselor Highslop. Moving on to item B. All right, any questions, concerns?
Nope.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, council. Now we'll move on to item B, Handwell Place Sighting, and I'll turn that over to our CAO.
Okay, so we had our meeting with Thermal Wood. And I wanted to, I tried to email him. We had looked at a couple of the ten-day availability. We had the original dates that he wanted. We've got two large meetings for rentals in the middle of the week. And remember, he was saying that we would have to block off some of the parking laws? Well, both of these rentals are, like, one is over a hundred and the other one is two hundred. So it's going to take all of the parking lot plus some. And so we did have the weekend of June thirtieth to July tenth, I believe it was. So I wrote back to him asking if they would be okay. I have not heard from him. I emailed again and still no response, and I called him, and I'm not able to get ahold of him. So if I don't hear from him by this weekend, we'll just kind of lock off that time and hope that it works and it actually gives him a little bit more time to get the product. Just remember, he was saying that it was, he had to order the product in or whatever, so. We also had talked about him doing the pergla. And I was hoping for tonight that I would have an actual quote, because I have no idea, like, how much that is. My spending limit is five thousand dollars without council's approval. So I'd just say that we do it up to a maximum of the five thousand, or you can go even more if you want. I, I can't, I can't see it being that much, because he's not, he just has to take the revive off, right, or whatever it's called. So anyway, I, I just put that figure in, but you guys can make the motion and change it accordingly.
I think five thousand should be more than sufficient.
Yeah, I, I think so, too, just for the pergla.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to authorize and direct the CAO to determine a ten-day availability for Thermal Wood Canada to strip, revive, and apply gray pigment to the entire Handwell Place building with the Q-Tex products as presented, as well as supply the paint for the black portion of the building at manufacturer's expense.
I'll second that.
A question.
Moved by Counselor Highslop, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Any questions, concerns?
I have a question. I think that the motion, as it's written here, says supply and paint the black portion. That's not what we want to do, is it?
Correct.
No, it's longer, just said.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, she changed it.
That was changed when the motion was read.
Okay, gotcha.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried.
I'd like to move.
Wait, one second, Counselor Cross, were you okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I was.
Okay. Moving on, and then I would like to move to authorize and direct the CAO to approve any costs associated with the stripping, reviving, and applying the gray pigment to the pergla using the Q-Tex products to a maximum of five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Fox. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, council. Okay, moving on to item C, the Regional Aquatic Center. So that's been a topic of discussion, especially this week, where there's a meeting coming up of the CRSC. So Terry put together, or our CAO put together quite a summary. Has everybody familiarized themselves with that summary?
Yes, she did, yes.
So basically, there's four motions coming forward at the twenty-third meeting of the CRSC. Items one, two, three, and four, has everybody read those motions? So what I need from council is, we can either vote on each one of the motions, or if council wants to go with it, we can just not support this regional pool. So whatever council wants to do, we definitely should get a motion up there.
Can I motion to suspend the rules, so we can have a bit of an open discussion?
I think that's a good idea.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Counselor McKenzie and seconded by Counselor Highslop to suspend the rules. So we'll now have the rules suspended, so we can have a brief discussion.
So first question, I guess, right off the bat, would be, the motion that was written, I'm pretty sure it was my motion, actually, was that we would want to move forward with a fifty-meter pool for this project. There seemed to be good agreement on that at the time. And it doesn't look like any of this proposal whatsoever is taking any of that into account. So that being said, I don't like the direction this is, this project is going in, despite the fact that we desperately do need a pool. I think that it's being approached wrong. And my hope would be that if enough, enough municipalities vote against us, then they will rethink the direction of it, rather than the province just moving forward and ramming it down everybody's throat. Perhaps, perhaps enough no votes would say, you know what? Maybe we should listen to what the other communities really want, rather than they're just doing, whatever they're doing now. They're doing something that's clearly not asking for actual input anymore. I don't really think personally that they really did ask for input, they gave us a couple of presentations, they never took any feedback or really any questions on it. So I don't like, I don't like the way this whole project went from the beginning, quite frankly. But this is where we are now, and I think we should, in my opinion, anyway, my thoughts on this, I'd like to see us stick with what the previous motion was, that we shouldn't be supporting the project without what we need for infrastructure, which is a fifty-meter pool for a long-term solution in this region. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments?
I second your points.
We'll both, Counselor Bringley, then we'll move on to Counselor Fox.
My concerns extend beyond the issue of the fifty-meter pool versus the twenty-five-meter pool. There's a lot of cost here, I think the hundred, twenty-seven thousand dollars is an annual. That is likely to be more than that with cost overruns. And the operating costs on top of that, I'm, I'm pretty sure, all said and done, we're going to be up two hundred thousand dollars plus a year, something in that range. And that's a cost that's going to have to be handed on to the taxpayers. And we just went through the process of implementing the Frederick Tink Recreation Agreement in the areas that were amalgamated, and I think there was general acceptance on that. There hasn't been a lot of negative feedback about that. But this is a, this is a niche sport, and as much as it's needed for that, for that, the people that are involved in that type of sport, I just don't have a sense at this time that the residents would be open to paying for that. So without a better sense from the residents to pay for that through the taxes, I, I don't support a fifty or a twenty-five at this time. I, I think more consultation needs to be done to hear what the residents think about that.
Okay, thank you, counselor, moving on to Counselor Fox.
I agree exactly with Darren, in the essence that we need a minimum fifty-meter pool. But I also agree with Counselor Bringley. I think I had emailed you, Terry, as to how many people in Handwell actually utilize the aquatic services within the Frederick Tink area. You mentioned niche, I mentioned a group, a selected group with a, you know, particular mandate or whatever. I'm not in favor of this pool, in the essence that the cost is going to be too much. And it's not going to meet the requirements of our people. And that's what we have to take a look at. Now, it may be rammed down our throats, that, if it is. But as Terry mentioned in her email, at least we can go to our constituents, if you will, and say, we didn't think it was cost-effective, nor in, nor benefit to the majority of the residents of Handwell. And as it stands now, I'm going to be voting no.
Deputy Mayor Jonah.
Well, I, I tend to agree with Darren, I mean, I have from the beginning, that a fifty-meter pool is far, you know, far more desirable. It is forward-looking, it's looking to the future. As far as cost goes, I disagree with the fact that people think it's a niche sport. I mean, the thing is open to everyone, it's a regional pool. I mean, everyone has the opportunity to use it, just the same as everyone has the opportunity to use the arenas. I think it's kind of narrow thinking to nickel and dime it down to how many people in this place are going to use it, and how many people in the Frederick are going to use it. It's there for the community, it's an asset to the whole region if we have it. But like I say, I also agree that a twenty-five-meter pool is not, you know, big enough for the future. And if we can somehow get it changed, to me, a pool, to me, a pool of any size is better than nothing. But, and the costs are not, I mean, yes, they're going to increase, hopefully our population will increase. We do realize we're going to be passing on to everyone. But I mean, we are part of the region, and I would like to say this, participate in some way.
Okay, Counselor Deckel.
I just wanted to kind of echo everybody. I, I agree, the twenty-five-meter pool is, the idea of it is disappointing. I get that, yes, like Counselor or Deputy Mayor Jonah said, that any pool is better than none. But I brought this up the last time, we had a good discussion, like, it's about swimming lessons. And it's unrealistic to try to get numbers from the Frederick Tink Aquatic, because you can't get in. You can't get on the waitlist, you can't get into the pools. Like, I have fought to get my kids into swim lessons for years. And it's not fair to try to get your kids into lessons just to swim, to save their lives. Like, it's not about being in a niche sport or wanting to compete against other people. It's about a lifesaving thing, like, wanting your kids to be safe if they happen to be in a situation where they're in water, right? So I'm, I'm disappointed that it doesn't seem like the communities taking part have been considered in this. It seems like somebody has had their mind made up about what this was from the beginning, and we've just kind of been the financial support, so it's disappointing, basically.
I agree.
Counselor Fox? Counselor Highslop?
Sorry, so where, I will agree with the fifty-meter pool, I think we do need a fifty-meter pool. I do disagree that it's a niche sport, because to me, swimming is for all ages. As Counselor Deckel pointed out, it's swim lessons for young people. It's aqua size for older people. Yes, it includes the lab, the lab swimming, but it also includes a lot more. What I've said before is that, do we want to be a funding partner or just a funding source? And right now, I feel that we're just a funding source. They're not really taking our considerations into account. The one thing that I did note when I was reading through the report, it's on one part of the feasibility study, it says, even with a fifty-meter pool, there is a need for other pools. So, which obviously would increase overall building cost and infrastructure and, you know, increases the operating deficit and all that stuff. But they already say, there's a need for other pools, even if they built a fifty-meter. So my point, I, I really and truly believe we need a fifty-meter pool. Yes, I agree, we probably need more than a fifty-meter pool. But I think, starting with a twenty-five meter, is not the way to go. Not for me, even though I recognize the fact that we really need a pool, since the Sir Max Aiken Pool is and has been slated to close for a long, long time. But I can't support what's on here now.
And Counselor Fox?
I agree a hundred percent with Counselor Highslop on this. I firmly believe that we need a pool. In fact, I think we need several pools, quite frankly, in the region. There's a need for, there's a need for swimming lessons, there's a need for all kinds of things. I know, since I, since I came here, I've had no opportunity really to swim. Every place I've tried to get in, it's very limited. If I want to get up at six in the morning for a swim, that's about the only opportunity that I have. It's really difficult here, and I. And I do worry about the fact that there are a lot of kids who aren't getting swimming lessons. And it's, it's, it's something that, that every kid should have. I can't support the pool the way it is at a fifty, at a, at a twenty-five meter pool, primarily because this is supposed to be the big regional pool. So I could support this if this was, if this was sort of a, a local area pool and downsized and, and a whole different scheme. But if you're gonna go big, which what, this is what it's supposed to be, then I, then I think we're really cutting off our nose despite our face to go with a twenty-five meter pool. We lose all of the economic development opportunities and advantages that come with having a, a fifty meter pool. And if it's regional, I think it needs to be a fifty meter pool. I don't have a concern with the cost, quite frankly, even with it escalating. I think we're probably looking at about thirty dollars a taxpayer as this moves forward, which, uh, uh, on an annual basis, whether I'm, whether I'm swimming or not, to have that available in the community, I think it's, is, is worth every single penny. So cost-wise, it's not a concern. The issue is, why would we do something that's only half a job when we can do the whole job on this thing? And so for that reason, as much as I, as I believe we need a pool, um, for this particular project, um, I would vote no. And I would hope that there would be other opportunities for, um, maybe pools in neighborhoods.
Okay, I have two more hands, or councillor Holt?
This is, refers back to swimming lessons, really not associated with pool. But this summer I went over to Charlestown, and I stayed at a motel, they have a pool. And they were actually, it was in Charlestown, and they were actually having Red Cross, Red Cross swimming classes in the motel pool. And perhaps that might be something that, separate from all of this, that you might be able to take a look at with the, with the Red Cross. And you never know, maybe the Fredericton, that quarter in May, be able to do something along that particular line as far as getting classes.
Uh, councillor Bringley?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify the comment that, the comment about a niche sport. That was intent, when we're talking about a fifty meter pool, that's competitive swimming, which, and maybe even niche isn't the right term to use, but that's what I was referring to. Absolutely, your points are all correct about needing room for more swimming lessons, and that's a great idea that you just came up with, councillor Holt. So I just wanted to clarify that, that I don't wanna leave the impression there's a whole lot of things to be done in pools not related to competitive swimming that are very important to the community, and I do agree with that.
Councillor McKenzie?
So everyone's kinda, well, it's one have, one, my, my own personal thought on it is, it sounds like, if, if Mister Chair, if you're looking for a direction from council with this, I believe it's unanimous that we all think that it's a no for this project. Unless I'm reading the table wrong.
Councillor Kraus?
Oh, councillor Kraus, we can hear from that.
Councillor Kraus, do you have anything to add?
No, I, you know, I agree with basically, you know, with councillor Highstip and councillor Bringley, it's a no for me. So, like, depends if they build it all, but you know, don't build half, we build all of them.
So it does sound like it's unanimous around the table that we don't support this project.
Yeah, this is certainly a, a big project, and, you know, again, there's all kinds of reasons we need a pool. But the cost-sharing formula, I'm not too keen on. But anyway, so if, if that's councillor's wishes, we'll go back on the record and we'll go ask for a motion to, and not in support of this particular regional aquatic center. Is everybody good with that? Okay, so we'll go back to regular session? To suspend the rules? We'll unsuspend the rules?
Somebody just needs to make a motion.
Okay, so can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make, make a motion for, uh, the, for the chair to go back to the aquatic center commission, is it? For this, the regional aquatic center, um, yeah, grouping, that Hanwell council is not in favor of the project in its current state.
Do I have a, uh, do I have a seconded? Okay, so, uh, motion by councillor McKenzie and seconded by councillor Holt. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you councillor. Okay, moving on to item D, unsightly premises process.
Okay, councillor. So with the unsightly, as we move forward, as you know, there's, um, we did some notices to comply. So with this process, we have to, you have to make a motion to allow Capital Regional Service Commission to follow this through the entire way. So that could be, um, that we might have to rent a dumpster, say, or hire staff to go clean a certain property. It could be that you need to do something more drastic and it's going to be taken to court, kind of thing. So you can't really put a dollar figure on this because whatever we do, it would end up being like a lien against a house or a home, or it would have to go to court and the lien would be there. But there has to be something stated from council, so, uh, the motion.
So I need a motion under item D.
Can I?
So, the motion?
Do we need a motion first?
Yeah, once it's on the table, then you.
Yeah, you need a motion then.
I would like to motion to suspend the rules first.
Oh. Seconded?
I will second.
Okay, so motion by councillor Highstip and seconded by councillor Holt to suspend the rules. So, everybody in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded.
I'm just wondering, the process, um, that we're looking at, is it only for those properties that we have had complaints against and orders to comply?
No.
Because the way this sounds is that it would be done to any properties without complaints being given.
No, so we have to follow the act. So if we get to the part of the act where it says that we have to do something, then our next step is to try to rectify it, and then it is to go to court. So any, so we just need something on record saying that we give Capital Regional Service Commission, permission to move forward with the unsightly process that is in the act on any property within Hanwell that we deem as being.
Yes, but that's not part of the motion, it's just any property within Hanwell.
Well, when I can go to a beautiful house and do it, it's going to have to be an unsightly.
But what if there hasn't been a complaint issue? It seems, it kinda seems to me that it's, um.
It probably wouldn't have been under unsightly, right?
Well, there's lots of ones out there that are unsightly that probably haven't had a complaint based against them yet. That's my only concern, is that I'd like to see us be a little bit more, tighten it up a little bit more if we're gonna do something like that. The other thing that I wanted to know before we move forward is, I have no idea how much it would cost to be able to go in and mitigate the situation.
And there could be chances, I know from past lives, um, I've seen them go in and totally demolish a house, and then the lien would be put on the property.
Yeah, I think it would depend on the circumstances.
But there again, how do we get the money back? So you put a lien on the property, do you only get the money back then when it's sold?
Right, but that is.
So you can't take it out of taxes or?
It goes on the taxes, that's my understanding.
No, but for example, say you just went in and you cleaned up the yard and you got rid of the cars and it cost four thousand dollars.
That'll go against your property tax bill.
Or, uh, if it go, if it happens to go to court, then the judge might say, okay, you need to pay.
So that four thousand dollars, what you're saying would just be added to their taxes?
That's my understanding, yes.
But what if they can't pay the taxes?
Then the property would be sold for tax sale.
After X amount of time.
Like any other, like any other property that.
So it's gonna take a long time to re.
The unsightly is a long time.
The money.
But a property can be put up for tax sale within a year, upon paid taxes.
But the whole process is gonna take a considerable amount of time then.
Yes.
We look at the time we've been looking at it and into so far.
Exactly.
It take, it takes a long time.
It takes a long time.
It's, like I said, it's not something that we do willy-nilly, I guess, to look for, an expression. We give it, we give people that are involved plenty of chances to clean it up before we take action. But in some cases, we seem to be being ignored and we have to move on. Because we do have complaints against these properties, and it's not fair to the neighbors that have been complaining and the properties have been deemed unsightly, so something has to be done. It's, it's a very unpleasant task that council does, but we have a responsibility to all property owners in the, in the community.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent, but.
So, okay, uh, council, let's, if you want, like, I was told this is what the wording had to be. I will go back, I will verify again, and we've got a special meeting of council next week with the auditor. And if you want to just wait for a week and just table this until our special meeting of council, and then I can actually confirm with Capital Regional Service Commission the actual wording.
Yeah, and could we find out, like, an amount, like you said, if it's over your spending limit, then what? I don't know what an amount would be that would be appropriate.
And you will never know, because how do you say?
But haven't they done it in the past?
But you, you can't, because it could be something, like I said, as small as renting a dumpster for a day, or it could be as large as demolishing a property. You're not going to be able to put, and that is why in the act, it says that it's either a lien or it's court or whatever, so.
It could be any of them.
The act is going to supersede whatever we say anyway. However, I will clarify that more if you wish, but Deputy Mayor Jonah might know from.
Well, no, I just, I just have a, a question, or not a question. I don't really see the point of putting this off. To me, it's clear, I mean, it, it comes under the bylaw, and as you say, it, it's written in a reasonable manner, I think. Plus, we also gotta remember that that meeting next week, we keep adding things to it, it's only has to be an hour because there's another meeting afterwards where most of council is at. I personally don't see any reason for clarification, I mean, it says that maybe deemed necessary according to our bylaw. So, I mean, it is what it is.
And that's the way I felt, if we have made a bylaw, and if we feel that there is a property that is going against our bylaw, then we need to get Capital Regional Service Commission to go through the process. And the next process after we talk to them, after we do notices to comply, then it is mediation, either, like I said, we're going to take and get a dumpster and people or whatever the process may be, and it could be other things as well.
See, I would be fine with it if we could have, like, within Hanwell that I've received notices to comply, which have been deemed, that may be deemed or that have been deemed necessary according to our bylaw. Something as simple as that, we change.
But I don't know, like, does it, does every property have to have a notice to comply? Like, I, I don't know that.
Well, we don't usually act on unsightly premises unless there is a complaint. We don't go looking for unsightly premises in the community with the bylaw officers.
The wording of this is that may be deemed necessary according to our bylaw. That may be deemed necessary.
Or that will be deemed necessary.
That will be deemed necessary according to our bylaw. That. Because may, may gives you an own compensating.
That's kinda what I'm going with, that this to me seems it's like too big of an umbrella.
Will, or that is, that's.
Councillor McKenzie?
So, my question with this issue, I suppose, is that if it's already in the bylaw and there are bylaw enforcement, isn't that just make this redundant? Why do we even have to have this at all?
To allow the expenditure, because it could be a, it could be a lot of money.
Right.
And so therefore, we, we have to say that we are willing to pay whatever money is necessary. Whether it's a small amount, or like you say, if you're demolishing a house, it could be a fair amount of money. We're just giving her the authority or giving them the authority that we are gonna follow through, that's all this is.
Doesn't it say in it already in the bylaw, though?
Don't think so.
The bylaw states what the bylaw is, but we don't really give the, uh, service commission the authority to act on their behalf and, and run up a bill.
I'm sure I agree with that, but, okay.
Well, there's no point, no point in having a bylaw if you can't enforce it, and if you won't enforce it because it's too much money, then what's the point of your bylaw? Like, we really need to give them the permission to.
Look, it's, it seems like this should be in the bylaw, if that's the case, it shouldn't, the, the, the costs and stuff. And that's, or maybe that could be part of the investigation for the, the, the next, to postpone this, the last special meeting. It's, it seems like the cost associated with having to act out, to enforce the bylaw should be in the bylaw, right?
Well, the statement could be in the bylaw for sure, or.
Or if it's not, then it would have to have this.
I mean, have to have this, why have the other?
This, this is basically, is not basically, it is a request from the service commission that we have to give, make a motion to authorize them to do this on their behalf.
It sounds like they did investigate and it's not in the bylaw, but it must, it must be. Okay, that would, that clarifies it, all right, that's all.
We have another comment, yes, councillor Fox?
I'm happy to move forward with this tonight.
Okay, no more questions, comments? Okay, we'll go back to, uh, important and, uh.
But before we do, we could just change that one word then, from may to will?
That may be deemed necessary, that is deemed necessary.
Or that has been deemed necessary.
But has been deemed.
Well, this is the wording this was, righted by CRS.
Yeah, we don't agree with it, is what I'm saying, I, I agree with it. You do?
I'd like to go with it. That happened.
Yeah.
I think may gives the flexibility.
Okay, so we'll unsuspend the rules. And we'll ask for a motion.
Let me read it?
Yep.
Okay, I move and authorize, I've moved to authorize and direct the CAO and the Capital Regional Service Commission to move forward with the unsightly process in, to any property within Hanwell that may be deemed necessary according to our bylaw, number thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four, a bylaw respecting dangerous and unsightly premises. And authorize and direct the CAO to approve the expenditures to correct the situations.
Seconded? Okay, so moved by Deputy Mayor Jonah and seconded by councillor Fox. Any more questions, comments? Councillor McKenzie?
I just wanna, uh, say that, yeah, I would have preferred the different wording with it, but since we do need to have this anyway, I'm still gonna vote to support.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
Councillor Kraus?
Aye, I'm good.
Okay, so we have, uh, one nay and seven ayes, so the, uh, motion is carried. Thank you councillor. Okay, correspondence, item twelve A from the Fredericton High School Safe Grad donation.
Yes, so councillor Kraus, you'll have to.
Councillor Kraus, I'm going to mute you.
That, so from him talking, it doesn't mute us talking, unless we can, does it mute our speaker?
We mute ours, no.
We can mute our speaker so we can't hear.
Okay.
I don't think they need to do that.
I, I don't think they need to.
No, I mean, it's stupid.
Well, it's better than a third conflict, I, I'd third conflict last year.
I know, I just didn't agree with last year.
That's up to the individual, if they want to be third conflict.
True, true that, yes, it is, if they wanna do it, do it.
Okay, so can I get a motion, please?
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to make a donation of five hundred dollars to the FHS Safe Grad Class twenty twenty-four.
Seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, so that's motion by councillor, councillor Highstip and seconded by Deputy Mayor Jonah.
Just a question, what did we give last year?
Five hundred.
What was five hundred?
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. Councillor Kraus? Oh, sorry, you're the one, can't hear me, good, that was just a test. Okay, motion carried, thank you councillor. So we can everybody back in? All right, correspondence, uh, B, the Heart and Stroke Foundation Door to Door Campaign, which will be happening in Hanwell. So, looking for a motion?
No.
No motions?
You might want to read it. It's gonna be from May, May twenty twenty-four to September twenty twenty-four, going door to door, so. If you have to see anybody.
Okay, moving on to item thirteen, the mayor's report. Did everybody get a copy of the mayor's report? Can I get a motion, please?
I move to receive the mayor's report as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Fox and seconded by Counselor Breaklaw. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Committee reports, the eight trendy committees on hold and the emergency measures committee met on April twenty-fourth.
Okay, so you have my, um, committee report. I had two resignations, um, one from John Casey and the other one from Counselor Chris Brimlow. So first, I would like a motion to accept, um, their two resignations and then I'll need a motion to accept my committee report.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Move to accept the resignations of John Casey and Counselor Chris Brimlow from the EMO Committee effective May sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Counselor DeClave and seconded by Deputy Mayor Jonah. Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded. Motion carried, thank you. So we need to, the, moving on to the emergency measures committee.
Yeah, so I just need a motion to accept my committee report.
I move to accept the emergency measure committee report dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Secondary? Moved by Counselor Holt, seconded by Counselor Breaklaw. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'd just like to thank everybody for coming to our meeting the other night, the notes and stuff that, um, we received. Uh, it's gonna be a great benefit for when we do that evacuation plan, so. It was a great meeting and I'm glad that it was council and our EMO Committee that could work on that together.
Contrary minded. That's where it was at.
And did I interrupt?
Don't worry about it.
Not sorry, nothing to do.
Motion carried, thank you, counsel.
At least you remember.
Counselor Holt.
I apologize not for being there, but. Here I come, what's happening?
Okay, moving on to the Manta Quack Committee Liaison Committee, met on, uh, March twenty-first?
No, no, that's, that's a typo, that should be.
Rural Plan Review, any reports?
Yes, actually, I forgot to send it in. Would you like me to read it? It's very brief.
Sure.
Anyway, our, um, at our last meeting, we were discussing, um. A broader discussion of agricultural policies and how it might fit into the rural community and what we look like. And as usual, we touched on several issues of illegal non-conforming uses, grandfather, grandfathering things in. Limits of land uses and triggers for conflicting land uses. What does Hanwell want to look like as a growing community? And we are having our next meeting on May twenty-third, I think it's six o'clock before, or, no, is it seven? Seven, yes, not till seven, because we're having the other one first, so, yeah, everybody continue on with.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the Rural Plan Review Report?
I move to receive the Rural Plan Report.
Secondary? Okay, motion by Counselor Holt, seconded by Counselor DeClave. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Hanwell Days Committee, everybody receive the Hanwell Days Committee Report? Can I get a motion to receive the report, please?
I move to receive the Hanwell Days Committee Report dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Secondary?
I will second.
Motion by Counselor Fox, seconded by Counselor Holt. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, now we move on to item fifteen, the CAO Treasures Report.
Okay, so you have my report. There wasn't any expenditures that was not budgeted, um, for. So it was pretty straightforward.
Can I get a motion to accept the CAO Treasures Report as presented?
Motion to receive the CAO Treasures Report as presented.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Highslepp. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. All right, item sixteen, the older unfinished business, a recreation building, I don't believe we have anything on that that I'm aware of. Uh, new business, we're looking at changing the date of the June regular meeting of council. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to notify the public that our regular meeting of council will be held on Thursday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Holt, seconded by Counselor Highslepp. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item B, travel expense policy number twenty twenty-four dash oh one, I need a motion, please.
Okay, um, first, counsel, um. I, on the very last page, I had added, um, another document, like, I revised the travel policy. Um, Counselor Highslepp had mentioned that we didn't really mention accommodations. So I added, um, this bullet in here, so whenever practical employees and members of council are expected to use the most economical means of accommodation. Upon reason, unless accommodations are recommended for a conference or workshop, because we often get group rates and different stuff. So I changed that, and then the one that I had provided to you in your package to begin with. Was by receipt and Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Jonah reminded me of that, so. Um, we had actually talked at the meeting the other night for it to be as per DM. So I just made that change and then under allow expenses, I just listed the accommodation charges. So if you guys are okay with this amended copy, that's what we will, um, vote on. That was the only changes on it, so.
I move, uh, move to adopt the Travel Expense Policy twenty twenty-four oh one as written in the amended version.
Secondary?
Second.
Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Highslepp. Any questions, comments?
So it has been changed, because I like, I read the other one this morning, I haven't read this one since.
Yeah, so.
It's a change, yeah.
It's two per DM, okay.
Last page.
What is this, the cell business? Okay.
Okay, any more questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item C, hiring of the assistant clerk.
So first I want to welcome, um, Devin, she's on here, so Devin, I'll spin you around. So this is Devin.
She really wanted to be here, like, really wanted to be.
Welcome, Devin.
Welcome, Devin.
Sorry, you're not getting well.
Get, get well soon, that's what everybody says, so.
So she is not feeling the best, so I, uh.
You didn't give her what you had, did you?
I think it's going around the office, we'll just say.
Yeah, and look where I am.
A four between two roses, is it?
Yes, yes, so she's gonna be a great asset to our team.
Yes. Welcome aboard, Devin, really pleased to have you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Nice to be here.
Hey, good. Can I get a motion, please? I can see.
Um, where's CAO, where's the CAO slash treasurer Terry Old Parker, has appointed as the interim assistant clerk in December of twenty twenty-two. Until a full-time position can be filled, and where is the assistant clerk will be hired in May thirteenth of twenty twenty-four. I move to appoint Devin Romanek as the assistant clerk for Hanwell effective May thirteenth and relinquish this appointment from the CAO slash treasurer.
I'll second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Jonah and seconded by Counselor Highslepp. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Upcoming activities, uh, Zoomers on Mondays and Thursdays, up to and not twelve. And I need a motion to move to a closed session, please.
I move to go into closed session.
Secondary? Moved by Counselor Fox, seconded by Counselor Holt, move to a closed session. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, counsel, we are now in closed session. Can I have a motion to move to a closed session, please?
Move to close session and move back into open session.
I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor Holt, seconded by Counselor McKenzie to move to a closed session. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, counsel.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to award the project for the strategic plan to Gemtech for the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars plus HST. I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Fox. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Second motion?
I move to accept the quote from Turf Works Landscape and Design in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars plus HST. To mitigate the grug damage and to reshape and regrade the area of the front lawn.
Secondary?
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Highslepp and seconded by Counselor Holt. Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Uh, next date and time for the next meeting is regular council meeting, council chamber is June the twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seven o'clock. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Counselor Holt, seconded by Counselor Highslepp. Meeting is now adjourned, thank you, counsel.